Good evening, everybody and the public. My name is councillor Amory Nixie and I'm the Chair of the Council. And welcome to the AGM on the 5th of May 2021. And to start off with, on the agenda number one, I'd like to ask for apologies, please. I believe we have some.
Thank you, Chairman. You have councillor Crittenden, Linda Piper, Stuart Piper, councillor Newzacki and councillor Young.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number two is declarations of interest. Do we have any, please? I'll take that as a no. Thank you. Okay, moving swiftly on to the first very important part of the meeting really is the election of the chairman for this coming year, 2021 to 2022. So this is when all things change. I am the current chair. Do we have a proposal?
I propose councillor Nixie for chairman of Ramsgate Town Council.
It's fine. Seconded by councillor Heatherington. That's very kind of you. Thank you very much. It's been a very interesting.
I was at that meeting.
So councillor Green and councillor Heatherington, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Item number eight on the agenda is the committee structure and membership. This is where we confirm or alter the committee's structured policies. I'm going to hand over to the deputy town clerk at this point.
Thank you, Chairman. You have two choices. You have five committees, as you know. You need to elect chairman for those committees. You can choose to elect vice-chairman if you wish, but normally that would happen at the first meeting of those committees, but council can decide to do both if they wish. Thank you. So you need to start with the finance and general purposes committee.
Thank you. I propose we stick with protocol and we select the vice-chairs at the first meeting, if everybody's all right with that. What are your thoughts on that one? Yeah.
I'll support that, Chair, in the view that we've got elections pending. It would be fair that way.
Thank you very much. Lovely. Right, okay. So we're looking at finance and general purposes and I'd like to propose councillor Green as chair for that committee. Do I have a second, then?
Councillor Makeyson.
Thank you. And it goes to the vote. Any comments, please?
Abstain.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, that's carried. Thank you. Next one is the Radford House and Customs House Committee, of which councillor Albon's done a fantastic job so far, and I would propose him to carry on, if that's all right, councillor Albon. I'd like a second, if I may.
Councillor Green.
Councillor Green, thank you. And as it goes to the votes, any comments, please?
Abstain.
Any other comments? That's carried. Thank you very much. Next item in the committee's report is the planning and infrastructure committee. I propose councillor Mackinson. Is there a second, then?
Councillor Green.
Thank you. And comments, please, as it goes to the votes.
Abstain.
Thank you. And if nobody else has anything, then it's carried. Thank you. Here we have town promotion. And I would propose that councillor Becky Wing would be excellent as the chair of that committee, if she'd be interested in it. I don't know if there's a second.
We have an election coming up. I didn't want this meeting today. That could be. If I'm selected, if I'm lucky enough to be selected, then it would be quite life-changing for me, so I cannot make any decisions until next week. And no, I can't accept the nomination.
Okay, thank you for letting us know, certainly. In that case, I'd like to propose councillor David Green carry on as the interim period and then we wait until the first meeting to be able to elect the chair for that particular group. That way we'd know whether councillor Wing would be free at all and also if there would be anybody else that would be interested, once we have the new member of RTC on board.
That seems eminently sensible, Chair. I will second that for councillor Green.
Thank you.
Just to note, Chairman, if you change chair of the committee, we will have to go to council just to ratify that, but to do it that way is fine. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. That's lovely. Thank you. Any comments on that at all? Thank you for your seconding, councillor Albon. No comments? Thank you very much. Right.
Is there a vote? I'd like to abstain again.
Yes, certainly. Anybody else? No, then we'll carry that. Thank you. Sorry, my phone's going on and off and I'm trying to look at the agenda at the same time. Last one, amenities and environment. Councillor Knight has done a sterling job up until now on that one and I would like it if he could stay on as chair. I don't know if we have a second, then? I don't know if councillor Knight would be interested in this.
Second, that's fair.
I'll propose that.
Thank you. So councillor Knight says yes if we vote them in. So let's put it to the vote, please.
Abstain.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, then. That's carried. Well, that's that part of the meeting done. We're on to item agenda number nine, notice of motions. And this is where I hand over to the deputy town clerk. Thank you.
Apologies, members. Did I send you the calendar of meeting for 2021/22?
No, you didn't.
Okay, we'll have to scrap that because we haven't got it. I'll share it with members tomorrow. Sorry about that. I can now move on to item nine for you.
I can get them up now if you wish.
Yes, that would be really helpful. Yeah, sorry about that, members.
Shall we leave that, Chair? And we can email any problems through to the town clerk.
That's absolutely fine by me, if it's all right with everybody else.
Thank you, members. What I will do then, I will share the calendar with you and leave it until maybe give you a chance to have a look and then by Monday, if you can let me know and the consensus is that that is an okay calendar, I can, you can sort of ratify that via email. It's not a problem. Thank you. Okay, we're now on to item nine, which is your notice of motion. We actually have two notices of motion. The first one is from councillor Ara with regards to parking in Ramsgate. It came in on time, not a problem there. The proposal is that the town clerk to look into the possibility of the multi-story Leopold Street car park to be made free of charge for users on Fridays and for RTC to put some funding aside for this purpose. That's over to councillor Ara. Thank you. Councillor Ara is muted.
Hi, yes. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Eileen. Yes, the motion said that I would like this to be debated tonight and this is very important for the resident of Ramsgate and the visitors as well. We have very expensive parking for Ramsgate, especially when we are the poorest town in the area. And I hope, you know, as a council, we owe this to our residents and this is the best way, I believe, that would be used our taxpayers' money. I hope I can count on your support. Thank you. And also, sorry, because we normally have the market, Ramsgate market, Fridays, Ramsgate markets will take place soon, hopefully, and that will support the market as well as the businesses in the town centre. Thank you.
Chairman, that is councillor Ara's proposal that I read out, so I'll put her down as proposing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, now, there's a couple of things I just want to clarify to make sure that we know where we are. And deputy town clerk, I wonder if you could advise me on this. There was something about not voting in any large sum of money before an election. Could you just explain that to us, please?
This works out, it was around £12,000. It's major decisions by a council during what is, or was known as perda. I'm told that's changed its name, I'm not sure. So major decisions should not be made. So I was just highlighting that in my email to you. I don't think circa £12,000 would be an issue here. You can debate it and decide tonight or it can come back. And the same with the other notice of motion. I don't think there's any problem with you discussing it tonight.
Thank you. I just wanted that clarified for everybody. Thank you very much. Okay, so I'll open this up for debate. There's a couple of things I do think we need to factor in, though, just so again that we've looked at all sides, is this is a TDC-operated car park, I believe, and I'd like to know what involvement TDC have in this before RTC jump in, if we can get funding from them. Because again, if it's their car park, I'd like them to be able to say what they're doing for it as well. But I will open it up for debate if anybody'd like to say anything. Thank you. Councillor Green.
I've no problem at all with looking into this again, Chair. What was my chair of finance hat on, newly wearing? I do think we need to know what TDC would charge us. And I'm just slightly questioning whether the multi-story is the best bet. It's an awful place to use. I don't really want RTC to be associated with it. And there are other options, car parks in the town. So yes, let's look at what we can do to help shops open up in the town. But let's look at all the options and then come back with an actual proposal. That's my feeling.
Thank you. Councillor Albon, sorry, did I say your...? I didn't know whether I did or not.
Chairman, I find it a bit difficult for me to actually take part in this debate currently as the cabinet member for parking for Thanet District Council, mainly because of the financial issues. So I do not intend to take part in this, as I think it would be unfair of me to put any weight either side on this. So, but what I can do, if the town council so is, is I am happy to find out any costs that would be for any car park that RTC decides, if it decides it wants to carry out this task, then I will be happy to find that out and I will probably get the information quicker than going through a normal process. So I would leave it with that, Chairman. Thank you.
That's very kind. Thank you, councillor Albon. And councillor Heatherington?
I wholeheartedly support your idea, Rashan. And I think it would be excellent to bring more people to the town centre, the shops, the restaurants, as life begins to go back to normal. But I hear what David's saying about whether the town car park is the best car park. I mean, if it works out that somewhere, I mean, are you talking about the large car park off behind the High Street, David, as an alternative?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Just as long as we can get something moving fairly fast. The sooner the better.
Yeah. So councillor Wing and then councillor Mackinson, thank you.
I mean, I think the last time we had free parking, it was actually in the multi-story and that was before my time as an elected councillor. I mean, certainly in Central Harbour, what I'm hearing from businesses is exactly the same as Rashan, that their businesses are going down the pan because of the increased amount that people are being charged for parking, which is turning people away from the town. I'm not quite sure which large car park you're thinking of. Is it the one where we tried the market, where the old haberdashery used to be? It's, you know, if I drive into town, believe it or not, sometimes I have to get to a quick meeting, I always use the multi-story. I don't use anything else because I know I'm going to find a spot there and it's quicker to walk to wherever I want to go. So my preferred option would be the multi-story. I know it's in a bit of a mess, but, you know, it's fairly okay and much more central.
Councillor Mackinson?
I'm not muted. And I was going to say something similar. It's more central for both the High Street and Queen Street and the harbour and the restaurants around the harbour, horrible though it is. So, and it's also easier for tourists to find, I think, if they're driving into town. That's all I've got to say. Yeah.
Chair, may I come in, please?
Could I let councillor Albon just say something first? Is that all right, councillor Ara?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just advise members, if they're not aware, that the lifts are out of action and are boarded up, waiting for new lifts to be put in? So for anybody with prams, disabled, wheelchairs, whatever, it's a bit of a no-no. So, you know, I'm just pointing that out to you.
Thank you, councillor Albon. I was going to say exactly the same thing in terms of disabled access. It's actually really quite difficult. Thank you, councillor Ara.
Yes, yeah, I'd just like to thank councillor Wing and councillor Mackinson. This is the Central Harbour multi-story car park. If you Google parking in Ramsgate, that is the one comes on the top of the map, you know. So it is for the visitors, finding out where is the parking, that comes first option, easy for people to find. And as councillor Albon mentioned about the lift, yes, I think we, I think most of the residents, local residents, they are aware of the lifts and also disabled facilities are on the ground floor. They, you know, they are all in the ground, on the ground floor and it is, the upstairs shut up at seven o'clock anyway. So I think the multi-story car park would be the best option forward, from my point of view. Thank you.
Councillor Green, thank you.
Perhaps if we do agree on the Royal Harbour car park, that we could persuade TDC to give it a sort of special clean on the Thursday night before we pay for it or something like that. Because, I mean, I know people that certainly wouldn't use the lifts in there even if they were working because they're so filthy. And the subway leading to the car park is also very off-putting. So, you know, I'm not an enthusiast for that car park. And the one at Staffordshire Street, you know, King Street needs to boost as well. So perhaps more than most of our retail streets. So as I said, if we pound out that sort of money, let's look at all the options.
May I come in?
Sorry, can I just, from the chair, hang on a second, councillor Ara. I would like to look at all the options too, I'll be honest with you. I'd like to look at the monies that it would involve for either Staffordshire car park or the Leopold Street car park. And I also think that we need to ask, to find out from TDC, if that's me writing a letter or whatever, about how they can help us, whether it is just a clean of it or whether they can suggest monies or if they have any promotions, because I'd like to know whether they were doing a day a week. And now that we are coming out of lockdown, I'd like to clarify with them, just in case they do have any promotions that are coming on board. I've got a Madeleine, I've got a meeting, I beg your pardon. I've got a meeting with Madeleine Homer on the 14th of May. I'd quite like to ask that question to her then, just to see if we can get anything taken. So I would actually like to propose that we look into this more before we make a decision on this. Do I have a second, then? Councillor Knight, thank you.
Chairman, sorry, I do apologize. You already have the proposal by councillor Ara on the table. It hasn't been seconded.
Yeah.
So unless that is seconded, it falls and then we revert to your proposal to basically hold fire and do some investigation first.
Well, but that proposal was to look into it. Look into the...
Yeah, it is.
If his proposal is to look into it, then I would dearly second it, yes.
Yeah, you can do that because the proposal actually reads the town clerk to look into the possibility, et cetera, et cetera. To that proposal, I can add in that to look at all car parking options and the costs and also to speak to TDC about a special clean on a Thursday evening. If it is Leopold Street, we need to find out exactly what the costings will be, et cetera. So it would be thoroughly investigated with the help of councillor Albon as well and then brought back. It can come back to finance and general purposes at some point or straight to council. Thank you. So I'll put you down as seconding that, councillor Nixie?
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you. I mean, councillor Ara, I'm fully with you. I agree, the town needs the best boots that we can get it. I just will make sure that we can do it in the best way possible. You've got your hand up, councillor Ara, and I know councillor Wing wanted to speak too afterwards. So councillor Ara, thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I think recently they did a cleanup for ground floor. I think councillor Albon might know about it. And I have been talking to the street cleaners, that they are also, you know, they are twice a day, morning and in the afternoon. And recently I use the car park every day, so I have noticed the difference.
Thank you. Councillor Wing?
Both councillor Ara and myself pushed, I've pushed the car park, even when the conservatives were in power, we had a meeting with Madeleine and we discussed quite heavily the car park. And then we had Ashby out. So we've been trying to push and we've also spoken to the current councillor, Rick Everett. So we have been trying to push as hard as we can over the condition of that building and there is going to be a spend on the lift, I understand, even to try and to get the canopies cleaned. None of that's been successful at all. Looking back at the history of it, I seem to believe Peter Campbell said that TDC would charge us the whole rate for the whole, for the whole car park. And I believe we should be negotiating. Sorry, we should... Sorry, Jane's laptop just came into action. We should be negotiating actually a price down with TDC because I think they'll probably try to charge us the maximum. So there should be some share of this as well to try and kickstart our local businesses.
That cutthroat TDC officer that I can see will have words. Yes, I agree. Well, let's discuss this when we have the findings of pricing and so on and so forth. And thank you. So that needs to go to the vote, however, just to clarify this. Sorry, my... I was on mute there. Does anybody have any comments? So we'll take it to the vote.
I'm going to abstain, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. We'll take that as carried then, we'll look into it and then we'll come back to the next finance and general purposes meeting to discuss that with intention of a decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry, sorry. Further notice of motion, this did come in from councillor Wing back in March. However, it didn't get onto the agenda to start with. It is now on the agenda and I've sent it through to you all today. It's in reference to Our Kitchen. The proposals are, it's a two-part proposal. The RTC seeks to establish a working party with key partners to look at and apply for possible streams of funding to support initiatives such as Our Kitchen shop and to improve the culture of recycle, reuse and reduce within our communities. The second part of councillor Wing's motion is that RTC allocates £20,000 annually for the next three years, a total of £60,000 over those three years, to support a permanent base for Our Kitchen shop Ramsgate in one of the large empty shops in our town centre. Members, you can do that, that isn't an issue. However, you go back to election in 2023. So you basically only have two years. So for this council, you can vote on that, it's not a problem, but bear in mind, your council may change. So I would be more firming up on a two-year as opposed to a three-year. If you wish to debate this, that's fine. Over to councillor Wing, please. Thank you.
Do we have to vote on whether we debate?
You can do, but we've taken it forward. I think the consensus is that you will debate this. I don't think anyone is saying that you won't. So yes, you can go ahead. Thank you.
Well, given the number of absentees at this meeting, then I think I would like to just consider the first part of the proposal. The second part of the proposal involves a significant amount of money. But I'll just give you some background on Our Kitchen. It presently feeds the two shops, one in Margate, which is on the High Street, and the one in Ramsgate, which is in the church. It presently, 800 families across Thanet use those shops. Sharon's given me an update, 350 families are presently using the Ramsgate shop. Those families are spread across our wards. She could give me the number of families from each ward and I suspect we would guess that there'll be more from some of the poorer wards than some of the more affluent wards. At Christmas, I was involved alongside Sharon and we distributed 350 Christmas hampers, mainly to families from the Royal Harbour. Again, those kids come from across Thanet rather than just from wards, the main two wards, I know the Court and Newington, actually, but because of the grammar school system, there are kids that come from further afield. At Easter, Sharon also got funding to distribute 850 Easter food parcels as part of the schools' free school meals. I can go, those, each of those parcels is full of fresh food, fresh meat, fresh vegetables and alongside tins and packets. The issue, the main issue with CICs and charities, and I know this from my work with Charlton, is that running costs are rarely part of any funding bid. So charities and CICs, and which Our Kitchen is CICs, they're constantly trying to scrabble around to find their running costs, which are normally rent. The Ramsgate shop is approaching sustainability in terms of its sales. So Sharon's got to a pitch where the money they take in from the five-pound bags actually enables her to keep restocking her shelves. So in terms of her goods, she's reaching sustainability. They've moved from a dependency, a dependency issue into an enabling and empowering situation. So instead of distributing food parcels that people have no choice with, they've introduced a five-pound bag. And they've introduced a five-pound bag and the feedback from there, the bags are massive, by the way, the feedback from there is that this enables people to buy the food they want rather than be given the food that somebody else has chosen for them. They've worked alongside the Salvation Army and instead of the Salvation Army giving out too many food parcels, they now give a five-pound voucher, our shop voucher. And again, the feed... And again, the feedback from, from the people that are referred to the Salvation Army is, we prefer this because we, we're empowered to choose our own food. So as I said, the, the system has reduced dependency and promoted empowerment. We have a vision though, and the vision we have is to create a larger shop. She is at risk of losing the church and it's not really an appropriate place for it to be. I think she's safeguarded for, for a, an extended period of time there in working with the, the church. But really, we want to look at, we've got a vision of putting this into a shop on the high street and adding other services. So we've already got quite a lot of our local restaurant chefs prepared to do pop-up cookery demonstrations. And we already know that, that there is, there's a strong lead in trying to recycle furniture. I've spoken to somebody today who, who wants to move on setting up reusing children's clothing because, because we have a number of young mothers that can't access those things. So what we're looking at, I thought there's two stages to the, to the, obviously the motion. The first thing is to set up a working party. And I envisage that working party will have a link into the council and I'm quite prepared to be that link into the council. But what we're looking for is key partners from outside. Charlton have agreed to come on board. We've obviously got the significant player, our kitchen on board. There are other people within our town who've expressed an interest in setting that working party up. Then what that working party would do is identify money and, and funding streams. And I'd already identified one that we've already missed, which is, it's, it's a national lottery one. And with, with the support of a, a big charity like Charlton getting on board and Sharon's, and Sharon's input, some local people with expertise and obviously the backing of RTC. We stand a good chance of getting those funding bids in and actually bringing some real money to do things in our town. And the whole culture would be around recycling, reusing and reducing in terms of foods, in terms of clothing, in terms of anything we can lay our hands on really. So we might get to a point where this thing grows so big that we end up taking Cozy Van Tootie out into our, out into other bits of, other bits of our communities. I think the second part of the, the second part of the proposal, which is to allocate 20 grand is further down the line, because we don't necessarily need that money now until we've set up the group that would create, that would firm up the vision and try and find other funding pots to help us get things going. So I suggest we look at the first part of this motion and we delay the second part of the motion until we're in a better situation to actually know what we need to do with the 20 grand, whether we need that much or whether we need less.
Thank you councillor Wing. That's all sounds fantastic and very informative. And considering that one of the things that Ramsgate Town Council wants to do is sort of like, you know, make sure that, you know, the, the credit unions and so on and so forth, people's advice for money and everything is, is something that we really trying to make available. And it just seems like a very good idea. I will open this up to, for debate, however, bearing in mind that we're debating on the working party side of things. We're not necessarily talking about the money side of things yet, but if people want to debate that now, then you're very welcome to. Do I have any hands up? Councillor Green.
Yes, I think the first part of this is a really great idea. And we should be fully behind it. It sounds to me as though the working party is, is a good concept, probably should work to, to the Financial General Purposes Committee. And I'm quite, quite happy for it to do that. And councillor Wing is quite right, it should be quite broad-based. Probably have a couple of councillors on it. And, and then report back to us. The second part of the, the proposal. I think we would need to know much more about the governance of the, of the organisation before we committed that sort of money to it. And the town clerk is quite right. I think we could only really commit for two years at the, at the maximum. But as, as councillor Wing said, we can delay that until we've, we until we've got the first part operating properly. I mean, it would be great if we could get outside funding in and then all, all of it to come from the council. So I'm fully supportive of certainly the first part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Hand up, but, but just before I call you councillor Heatherington, the other thing I'd, I'd like us to, to look into if we can are the other local food banks within Ramsgate. What I don't want us to do, of course, is sort of like, look like we're favouring one rather than the other. I don't know what the relationship between like the Newington Food Bank and so on and so forth is with our kitchen. I don't know if that's something councillor Wing, that, that, that you have any information on at all?
If I'm being really fair and open and honest, I think there is a very problematic relationship between the Newington Food Bank and, and our kitchen. But I think it's, I, I, I think it's more, more to do with they, there needs to be a connection there. So one of the things that could come out of this is, is to actually try and develop those bridges. From my point of view, as, as a charity worker, it's very hard to get into that Newington centre, full stop. So, but this is something that could actually help bridge, help bridge that, that gap or that connection between the two. So yeah, you're, you're totally right. But our kitchen, our kitchen does operate with all the, with, with, very well with the Salvation Army, for example. And during, and during the lockdown, when we geared up that whole, that whole centre, she worked across the whole of Thanet as well. So she's more than capable of working across the, the whole of the area. But it, it sort of needs, we need to try and establish a two-way, a two-way dialogue between the two. And maybe that's where, that's where the committee comes in, in trying to maybe get somebody from the Newington onto that committee.
Thank you. Yes. Because I mean, it's, you know, Ramsgate specific that we're, that we're really considering. And, and so, you know, Newington is, is part of that. So that would be great. Thank you. I've got councillor Heatherington, then councillor Moore. Thank you councillor Heatherington.
I suppose just to add to a bit to what councillor Wing and you've just discussed. I mean, Sharon's got a lot of kudos. We've all, a lot of us have done work with her. She had a very good project running in Newington the summer before last. And she tried to sort of work with the Newington big local. And not always, I mean, it is quite difficult getting into the group. But I think this is a kind of ideal time to foster connections between the different food banks. And also there's more with this proposal, because there's, it is kind of added, added stuff here, which is useful to the town and potential for more growth. So I think it's very exciting.
Thank you councillor Moore. Can hear me.
Okay, right, thank you. If I can just go back to Newington and their food bags, they started this over two years ago. And they're collecting, and, and you know, because I collect things myself, so household food, clothing, toys, bedding, all sorts of things that go into Newington and being spread out. And also I'm most like, I would like to remind people that they, money that Karen Constantine generously gave, Newington didn't get a penny of it. They're very independent. They weren't offered it. And, or they take it, but they don't work at all. They have a chef coming in cooking food, giving it to people. He does displays as well, he does. Suppose, or like, you know, as soon as I get a bit more lax, they're going to do them in the community centre. You know, there's, there's lots of plans coming up for them.
You're very difficult to hear at the moment, I'm afraid. I'm only getting sort of every other word. I'm sure other people are finding the same problem.
Oh, do I have to start off? Hello, over again. Right, I'll go nearer the microphone.
I think actually, I think it's better if you go further away than the microphone.
You think so? Right. In Newington, they do all sorts of things on it all. They've been doing this over two years. They've been collecting clothing, household goods, bedding, toys. And, and I feel a bit sexy for myself. And then just spread out all over Newington. And they, they would like money to increase what they can buy from their share. But Karen Constantine kindly gave a lot of money for food banks. Newington didn't get a penny.
Chairman, I need to clarify that point. Chairman, I need to clarify that point.
Please do, please do deputy.
Please do.
Constantine has given more money. And I have just had a thousand pounds accepted by Newington, by Cara Thorpe for Newington Food Bank. They will be receiving a thousand pounds shortly. I don't think councillor Moore would necessarily know that. Thank you.
No, I don't. It still stands that we didn't get any of Karen Constantine's money.
Sorry, I can't help you.
No. Councillor Moore, I have to say, thank you for that. I think we get the gist of it. With, with regards to councillor Constantine's money, that's sort of like up for her. We're, you know, Ramsgate Town Council and she's Kent Counter Council. So we don't really have any jurisdiction over who she gives her money to. And so, so that might be unfortunate, but that's sort of like without our, you know, outside of our remit actually. But thank you. No councillor Wing would like to talk. And then, sorry, beg your pardon councillor Ara, then councillor Wing. Sorry Becky, Rochan was first.
Okay, yes, thank you. I wholeheartedly would like to support councillor Wing. And just one thing I think we need to understand here, that food banks are free. They give you free food, give people free food, whereas our kitchen is not free. People come and buy their food, either a pound a bag or five pound a bag. So this is like, as councillor Wing said, is empowering people. It, it's a completely different entity from the food banks. And, and the way councillor Wing is describing is into growth, you know, making into clothing, furniture. I think this is a huge achievement, it would be a huge help for the community, for our community. And I would like to see our kitchen to work with other food banks like Newington and Salvation Army to make this grow. And, and I would like to be actually, you know, within the working group, councillor Wing, if that's possible, please. Thank you.
Thank you Becky.
I think, I think what we've got is some disconnections, if that makes sense. Because I know, I mean, I delivered hundreds of food parcels and the, the bulk of my food parcels from our kitchen and the Salvation Army actually went into Newington. I did more of my visits there. Some of them were families I worked with. So I think this is not about being critical of anybody. It's about trying to establish something that, that, that grows and becomes organic and empowers people. One of the other things I also looked at is if we've got furniture being mended, then we move to a situation where we've got tradespeople, if we can find the funding that we actually employ. And then, and then we actually can have a situation where young people can be, can be given some work experience. And that's why I've included Charlton there, because Charlton has all the safeguards in place and, and everything there. So it's about bringing, it's about bringing two groups together or a number of groups together to maximise outputs for everybody.
Thank you. Right, so let's get this correct. Detective town clerk, do you have a proposal or anything on the table before I do, before I do anything?
You do indeed. That's how the motion works. Councillor Wing has proposed that RTC seeks to establish a working party with key partners to look at and apply for possible streams of funding to support initiatives such as our kitchen shop and to improve the culture of recycle, reuse and reduce within our communities. You now need a second.
I would like to second that please.
Absolutely. Thank you. And with that, I'll put it to the vote. Is there any comments please? Councillor Green. You're on mute, sorry.
Just a bit careful about the governance of this. I mean, what powers will the working party have? Now, I assume, like other working parties we've set up in the past, that it will report back to either the council or a committee with proposals. Is, is, is that the idea or will it be freestanding, as it were?
Councillor Wing.
It's got to report back to somebody because otherwise it's just free. There's, there's no, it just sits alone and that can't work. Because I see Ramsgate Town Council as a key, as a key partner within that partnership. You know, it can't, sometimes funding bids can only, only be applied for with, with somebody in a higher authority approving that. So initially, initially I would, I would, I would, it could fall under the governance of, of your group. And then if anything big comes up, it goes, it goes to full council. And it would, it would be, it would be quite nice to, to report him. But I, I think an element of that working party is we've got to be given the freedom to operate in a way which enables creative thinking and exploring to happen. So initially we can't be tied down by the sort of, the sort of structures that exist within a council, because that will stifle what we actually develop. So I would, I would suggest that, that we're given a timeframe and we report back to finance. I'm quite happy to report back to finance and government or, or the full council. Maybe the full council is, is the better place because at the moment it doesn't involve money, but it does involve the potential to affect families and people across all of our ward.
Thank you. Just before you come back to that, councillor, you've got councillor Knight.
I, yeah, well, I mean, I support the, I support the idea that I'm looking at this. I think it's a great idea. I know Sharon personally, I've done some work with her myself. And it needs to be supported. I like the general idea around it in terms of empowering people rather than just saying, here's your bag of food, now clear off. And I think, should we go for it? Why not? What have we got to lose on it? As far as governance concerns, I, I can think I can hear what David's hinting at is that if it turns out to be a commercial enterprise, then we may have a problem with it because we probably precluded from actually supporting commercial enterprises. But that's to be sorted out. Becky, by all means, carry on. You're good work with that. Try and get everyone on board. Get as much money and interest as you can and come back to the council fairly quickly. Because I feel it's a thing that in general, most of us would support on the council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Green.
We, we do have a model. We have a neighbourhood plan working party which has members of the public on it and councillors. And I would suggest that that's a suitable sort of model. Although I'm not a great fan of the neighbourhood plan working party. It is a suitable model, perhaps no more than three councillors on it. And then other people as Becky has suggested. And reporting back to perhaps FNGP, perhaps full council. I'm, I'm not sure which would be best.
Okay, thank you. Well, as part of this proposal then, are we, the, the next FNGP meeting is June the 26th, if I remember rightly, deputy town clerk?
I believe it is chairman, thank you.
It is. So Becky, if that's too long for you, then I don't know if there's a full council meeting before then?
No, I don't, I don't think that's too long at all. I mean, this thing's not going to move fast. This thing's going to move very slowly, because even if you identify funding streams, there's a whole series of, you know, I've just put in a I've just put in a third tranche of funding for Charlton that was put in nearly eight weeks ago and we've yet to hear. So these things move very, very slowly. So initially, it will be trying to just work out what we can achieve with very little, actually. So there'll be no money involved until, until we decide what to look at.
Okay, so go on councillor Green before I say. Go on mute.
We have TDC, or rather TDC have, the levelling up £20 million fund potentially for Ramsgate. And I think this concept would be, but if we can get it together in time, that, that's got to be submitted by the middle of June.
Yeah.
The bids to that, if we could get it together in time, this would be an ideal project. It ticks one of their boxes.
Yeah.
Which is to revitalise the High Street. So it would have the added advantage of bringing people into the High Street. So that's, that's one strand that we could work on.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with that, David. So Becky, as I put this to the vote, which we're just about to do, if we bear in mind that we're bringing it back to finance and general purposes on, on June the 26th to get an update from you so that we can again start talking about monies. But as you, the working party, if you can, you know, get something in for the levelling up fund and you needed to speak to David or so on and so forth, you've got information from TDC, then I think that would be an excellent thing to do.
I think my first, my first point of call is to actually try and work out who needs, well, your first port of call is to find out who's enthusiastic about it and pull those people on to your working party. Because this is the sort of thing you can't, you haven't got time to drag people along. So I'm certainly, we'd already set up a small working party for Charlton, for me to lead on a grant that we've missed actually. And I represented both Ramsgate Town Council and Charlton on that, but we missed the deadline. So there was no point in coming back. And the town promoter was on there and, and another local. And I'm quite happy to take a third, a third councillor from here, but somebody who can hit the floor running and, and could offer something rather than me having to upskill somebody on, on what's going on. So if you, you just give me a bit of freedom for the time being to just, just create this, then I will feed back regularly to, to you as the chair and you can feed it to whoever you want.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm putting this to the vote. Has anybody got any comments? No, that's carried. Thank you very much councillor Wing. Okay. You're welcome. Item number 10, appointments to outside bodies. This is where I hand over to deputy clerk.
Thank you. I think most members know about membership of outside bodies. You can have up to two members appointed as delegates to attend the Kent Association of Local Councils' district and county meetings. Basically, you appoint two people if you wish, or two members if you wish, and then I'll let them know who they are. And they make, they should make contact and invite you to meetings. This is, this is the calc was what you agreed to pay a subscription to for this year at the last meeting. So you would need to do that if you wish. And also just to, this report just advises you that RTC is a corporate member or limb of the St Port's Confederation, which has a largely ceremonial function and its meetings usually two per year are attended by the mayor and the clerk or their deputies. Thank you. So any member who wishes to be a delicate or member, member of an outside body called calc, please. Thank you.
Right. Hands up those people that would like to be members. I wonder whether we could, Jane Hetherington raises her hand. Fantastic. Councillor Hetherington.
Well, I would be quite interested in going, actually. I mean, it's only twice a year and I think it's sort of, there's quite a lot of invaluable information that in sort of the new role would be useful. So yeah, I'll go.
Thank you. I would.
It's about the people want to go to, so I don't want to deprive anyone.
Well, the thing is, I'd quite like to go to sadly enough, but I didn't want to jump in there as a chair. I wanted to open it up for other people. So if nobody else does want that, then Jane Hetherington, I will, I want to scorch you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. So you are. Right. That's, that's that done. Thank you. Ramsgate Fund 11, thank you, Deputy Town Clerk.
Thank you. Okay, so I will advise calc and hopefully they'll make contact with, with both of you. If you don't hear from them, let me know and I will go back to them. Have you moved to Ramsgate Fund? You have, haven't you?
I have, my love, yes, thank you.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, everybody knows about the Ramsgate Fund. You have allocated for financial year 21, 22, £35,000. The maximum amount which may be awarded is 10% of the fund, which is up to £3,500. We have three applications. I can advise you that each application fits the criteria for the Ramsgate Fund. The first one is the Winterstoke Gardens and Eastcliff Projects. The grant requested is £1,029.48. You don't have to worry about the 48p, you can actually round it up if you wish. Total projected expenditure is £1,179.48. The funding is sought for planting tools, wood for repairs to benches and entrance fee for South and South East in Bloom. The group plant, weed and care for the Great Two listed gardens and the Chine. I think we all are aware of the group. The project the applicant advises will help the group to enhance and replenish the existing planting which gets damaged by children and adults climbing on the rocks. They are maintaining the gardens all year round. They repair and varnish benches in the area and have prepared the sunshelter for several events, including the Midsummer Get Together in 2019. Councillor to decide, please. Thank you.
Well, I have to say, not only would I like to give them all the money, I'd like to add another £50 to buy them all a coffee, quite frankly, because I think they do a sterling job. But comments, comments from council, please. Councillor Ara.
Yes. Thank you. I would like to propose the, the full amount given to Winterstoke Garden because I think the volunteers did a wonderful job, you know. Like you said, I would, I would love to buy their coffee as well. I did a few years ago, I used to take snacks like some mozzies and onion ballsies to the group. But no, I think this is a wonderful job they're doing, you know. And they have quite a few volunteers as well. And I wholeheartedly support this. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Green next, then I've got councillor Knight, there's somebody else as well. But councillor Green, sorry.
I think this is really worthwhile, Chair, but I'm sure the clerk will advise, but it's really outside the, the terms of reference of the Ramsgate Fund, which is the capital items. Now, if there's a way around that, I would take it, but it is, I think, outside the terms of reference.
Sorry, it was tools and plants as well.
The tools certainly fit in because they are one of purchases. You have funded before for this sort of project, so it is entirely up to you. The entrance fee for South and South East in Bloom doesn't fit. But tools and planting, wood for repairs to benches, again, that's more revenue. However, it's all part of that project. So you can fund just for, basically for the tools if you wish. But you have done this before. You have, you have funded planting before or plants before.
Okay, I hear, I hear what you're saying. Let's see what other people say. Councillor Knight, thank you. You're on mute, sorry councillor Knight.
Hey, you're on mute, Tony.
It's never easy technology, is it? Keep, keep going. Meanwhile, if I, councillor Knight, hang on a second. I've got councillor Wing that wants to speak, so work out you're muted and then we'll go, we'll come back to you.
I think if, if the plants are permanent, then they, they're capital, aren't they, really? And I'm sure there's some Eastcliff councillors that'll chip in for their entrance for the South East in Bloom. So we sort of got it covered, haven't we?
Thank you. I'm sure tours and, and plants would come to that. Councillor Knight, how are you going? Is there anybody else that wants to speak while I'm waiting for him?
Yeah, I'd like to speak, please, Chair. I know you probably can't see me on the thing, but yeah, fully, fully support this, Chair. I think it's, it's, as everybody says, they do a fab job and I think we should support it. I'll give them all the, all, all the money for everything there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Knight, you look like you're having problems.
He's got the cavalry in.
Absolutely. It better be worth it, Tony. Yeah?
If you don't hurry up, we'll have to get a lip reader.
Well, whilst Tony's sorting that, Chair, we do need to be aware that we're creating a precedent if we do this.
We do need to be aware. How do people feel about this?
Yeah, I'm cool with it.
I think, I think it's a volunteer group that's doing its utmost for Ramsgate and generally, you know, they're above and beyond the, the hours they put in. I think for tools and, and plants and so on and so forth, I think that we could possibly give them that. That's my personal view. Obviously, we'll go to the vote on this one. Right, councillor Knight, off you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank God for that. Hardly wait. Well, yeah, I mean, it's in my ward and they do a great job. They do work hard all year and they're up, they don't get paid for it, as far as I can gather. And make places look nice, there's lots of people benefit from them to walk along there. I haven't got a problem buying them some annual plants. I mean, you could actually, you could say, oh, they've got to be perennials and last forever. And nothing lasts forever on cliff tops. Yeah, why not? Why not, why don't we give them the money? I have to say that, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Go on councillor Green, you were going to say.
I was going to say perhaps we need to take a look at the terms of reference to the Ramsgate Fund and change it to cover this sort of thing.
Absolutely. That might, might be the solution, definitely. Thank you. Meanwhile, I shall put this to the vote. Anybody got any comments against or abstain?
Chairman, you need a seconder.
Oh, do we indeed? There you go. Councillor Alburn, councillor Knight, either or. Thank you. And if nobody's commenting, then I'm, I'm saying that's carried. Super, next.
Thank you. The next application is from Lobella Alliance Square Community Group. They're asking for £1,670, which is the full cost of the project. The funding is sought towards improving the environment of the square by planting trees, shrubs and plants, as described in the application, and to enhance the facilities available to many families who make good use of the play area while encouraging reduction in litter, including a litter bid specifically for children. That is in, within the report and they are child, you know, they attract children to put the litter in, like animals or whatever. So the trees, shrubs, permanent plants and the litter bin fit with the Ramsgate Fund criteria. So councillor to decide, please. Sorry about that hiccup, I was a bit.
That's, that's, that's great. Thank you, Deputy Town Clerk. I've got councillor Huxley and then councillor Alburn, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Obviously, that's in our ward in Eastcliff. Councillor Alburn, me and councillor Crittenden have done a lot of work with this residents' association. They work really hard. They want the kids from all the surrounding areas to go and use the play park there. They don't discourage it, they really want to use it. So they want facilities there for kids. And planters up with flowers already. They've got a good relationship with the local pub there in the square. So the people who run the pub are really supportive of what they're doing. So they've set up a residents' association, they've got a bank account now. So, you know, we've done a lot of work with them already to try and make the park better and the trees and everything that are already there. So I would support that wholeheartedly. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Alburn.
Yeah, just to, just to come in on the back of what councillor Huxley has said. I think what's, what's interesting in Lobella Alliance Square is the, is the mixture of houses, both private and council. And, and what has developed certainly since we've been elected in 2019, not down to us obviously, but down to the residents with a little bit of encouragement, I have to say, from us, that it blossomed, for want of a better word, with the, with, with what they've done. We've helped in relation with the children's play area of getting things changed and added. And, and as we said, we've, we've recently been up there with the council's tree officer to look into, see what trees that can be maybe crown raised, trees kept, trees added and where and what. So we've had that meeting and on the back of that, this is the fund, this is the funding that they've applied for. So everything is, has been very, very positive. And, and I really hope that we as a council can support this because otherwise I think it would be a big setback for them. And, and it's something that going on the back of what councillor Wing was saying about what we need to do for the town, this is another part of the town of which needs, needs some encouragement. And, and I'll certainly hope the council would support that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else who want to put it to the vote? No, then I'd like to put that to the vote, please. Any comments? Abstain or against?
Chairman, sorry, you don't have a council at all.
Picky, picky. Brilliant, I'll second it. Thank you. It's late, I'm tired. For the full amount, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I put it to the vote. Thank you.
And finally, the last application is Ramsgate and Bosters Sea Cadets. They want to spend £609.96, that's the total amount of the project. The funding is sought for the replacement of white galley kitchen goods to allow expansion of their catering facility. The applicant advises that during lockdown and where staff have been allowed into the unit, they have refurbished the galley and laid a new floor at their own expense. Expansion of the catering facility will enable cadets to gain catering proficiency on site rather than having to travel outside of Kent. Plus, they will be able to host more cadets from elsewhere during events. The goods the applicant wishes to purchase are an electric cooker, a fridge, a microwave and a tabletop dishwasher. And they've done extremely well on just over £600 to get all those items. Thank you.
Yes, they can come and refurbish mine then, I tell you. Any, any comments? Councillor Green, then councillor Alburn.
I'm meant to be always the wet blanket, but I guess it's my role now. The clue is in the title, Broadstairs and Ramsgate Sea Cadet. Ramsgate Fund terms of reference are purely for Ramsgate only. So it would be a novelty to give to an organisation that covers more than one council area. than one council area. We could give half, but it's up to counselling.
Certainly, that's a very good point. Councillor Alburn, then councillor Wing afterwards.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Following on from councillor Green's comment, my, my question was, where is this based? If it's based in Ramsgate, but it's got Broadstairs can attend Ramsgate, Broadstairs children or Broadstairs Sea Cadets can attend Ramsgate, and, and the function room, function hall, whatever it is that they use, is in Ramsgate, then I'm fully in favour. Thank you, Chair.
I can clarify, the address is the United Municipal Quarters, the First Broad, the Sailors Church in Millet Road.
Thank you. Councillor, councillor Wing, then councillor Hetherington, did you have your hand up or have you just put it down again?
I've just put it down because I chose to agree with what Steve said.
Okay, lovely. All right, councillor Wing, thank you.
I, I was invited by Steve to visit the Sea Cadets and to look at the shocking state of the Sailors Church that's actually falling into disrepair. And they are doing a fabulous job at trying to keep that building in some sort of order. It's absolutely shocking. I also think, you know, they work with, I've referred young people to the Sea Cadets and they work with some of our most vulnerable young people and they actually do a bloody fabulous job. I've also, I'm also trying to work with them so that they can, they can become partners of a charity called Collier Ferguson Charitable Trust, where hardship grants are applicable to young people. And we've used them very effectively at Charlton to support young people and their families. I, you know, it's based in Ramsgate and for us to decide we're only going to give half because some of the kids might come from Broadstairs, I think that's, it doesn't sit well with me at all. Kids are kids. Families are families.
I, I don't think it was going to be decided. It was something David suggested, being the fact that it was Broadstairs and Ramsgate, as in, as in, you know, what do you do in this particular situation? I'll, I'll come back to that. But David Green.
I think then we definitely need to include it in a review of the terms of reference of the Ramsgate Fund. This is where, this is where there's the other issue.
Yes, duly noted.
So perhaps we'll put that on the first agenda of the F and JP.
Thank you. I will, I will come to you in a second, councillor Alburn, but duly noted, and I think so too. I think the problem too lies with, if you have an organisation that covers more than one part of Thanet and you're applying for money, then it must be very difficult to work out where you apply to. And if you're clever, obviously, you're going to apply to both. I think I would very much be in favour of this purely because it's a Ramsgate building especially that serves the community. And therefore, I would want to make sure that building is kept to the best it can be and is serving our community. But I definitely take on board the fact that, you know, it also covers Broadstairs and we, we are Ramsgate based. But I think this would tick that box. So if we could come back to...
Except, except that we've turned people down before. Because we do need to change the terms of reference.
Yes, absolutely. I, I agree with you. That's what I was going to say. So we definitely need to look at the terms of reference for this. Thank you. Councillor Wing.
I see for me, it's a case of swings and roundabouts, because there will be clubs and organisations in Broadstairs. Because of the specialist nature of some of these clubs, there will be clubs in Broadstairs, there will be clubs in the villages, there will be clubs in, in Margate that also work with Ramsgate-based young people. And, you know, we need to do as much as we can for our young people, whether they're Ramsgate-based, Margate-based, living in the villages or wherever. Thanet young people have a poverty of opportunity in so many ways. And we need to do all we can. And certainly, I would object to any, any restricting of money for any club that is, is working across, across Thanet, not just for young people. I seem to remember there was a grant for some computers for, for adult disability group. And Peter Campbell came in and said, what are you going to do? You're going to stop the adults from Broadstairs not using the computers because they come from Broadstairs and not Ramsgate? So I think it's, it's divisive and I don't think it's fair. And I don't think it's morally right that we should be doing this.
Yeah, thank you. But if you actually listen to what councillor Green was saying, he was saying therefore we need to look at the terms of reference. Because if it's the terms of reference that needs to be altered, then it's the terms of reference that need to be altered. It is actually something that's quite important, because again, it follows procedure, because you can't just sort of override something. So what you're saying with regards to, to children in the area is true. What I've said with regards to keeping a Ramsgate building, you know, alive and kicking as it were, is true. But we do have to remember that we are following our own terms of reference. So it's that that needs looking at. And as councillor Green rightly said, so that is something that we'll bring to the next meeting. However, we do have to, I'm seeming second to this, if there's a proposal for the first amount. But first of all, I'll go to councillor Alburn.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I understand what Dave, what Dave is saying. And I think that we should look at that in relation to the constitution. However, this is, this is in a Ramsgate building. And, you know, whether the name Broadstairs is added on the end of it, it is, it's a matter. I would like to just to come back to you. Councillor Wing. Sailors, Sailors Church. Becky, I have reported that because I was told, I was aware of the issues in relation to the building. It's not in my portfolio for TDC. But I have reported that and asked for our heritage and conservation officers to come and have a look at the building. Because you're quite right, it's a Grade Two listed building. If it's, if it's running down, then we've got, we've got to do something about it. So, but unfortunately, that's outside of my remit. But I have reported it, just, just so you know.
Thank you. So Deputy Town Clerk, where are we at? What do I need to do?
You need a proposal and a seconder and then take the vote.
Thank you. Right. So I would propose the full amount given. Do I have a seconder?
I will take a letter, thank you.
Thank you. And then it's going to the vote. Do I have any comments, please? Nope, then I'll say that's carried. Thank you. So councillor Green, sorry.
Just to come to Steve, my understanding is that this organisation took this building on in competition with others and they took on a fully repaired lease. So you might find it difficult to tackle that, Steve.
Could I come in there? I think, I think you're confusing the two. The Ice House was taken on by a group. It was an asset transfer and it went to, I think, the, the, there's two different sailing groups. So I'm, I'm not going to say which one's which because I'll get confused. The Sailors Church, I've spoken to Steve, they have an internal repair, but their internal repairs are being affected by the outside, particularly guttering, which has, which, and windows. And that's responsibility of TDC. And that is impacting on the internal of the building. We've also now got a locked church with all the historic items in there that is going to be subject to water ingress. So it is quite important that somebody gets out there and does something. So I'll just update you on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, if that's the last one, Deputy Town Clerk, we're on to the last item on the agenda, number 12, staff matters. Thank you. Staff do matter, by the way, just so you know.
This could be a confidential item. You are discussing the role, the new, of the new town clerk and financial details. So I would suggest that you put this under confidential and you need to have a proposal and seconder to do that. Thank you.
A proposal, Chair.
Yes, and I'll happily second it. Thank you. And thank you, Dean, if you could do the honours. Thank you.